The notice requirement provided for the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice is properly given, said notice have been transmitted to the care review and start letter on Wednesday, January 9th, 2019 as well as posting on the bulletin board in the city clerk's office.
It's Council President, Council members, Armani. Here. Councilwoman Davis.
Here.
Councilman Good.
Present.
Councilman McCray.
Present.
Councilman Snorch, absent during local call, Vice President Hockaday.
Here.
Council President Mills-Branson.
I'm present.
We have six members present and a court.
Can we please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invitation?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Humbly we ask God to give her peace and love her charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all those who work for justice and peace. Amen.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the combined session of January 22nd, 2019.
Come on.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
In your post, in your extension. Mr. Clerk, are there any communications from the mayor?
There correspond stated January 24th, 2019, from honor to mayor Adrian O'Maff. The trusted members of the everybody requesting the advice and consent of C Jean Rolls as alternate number one member of the Plainfield Zone Board of Adjustments.
Okay. Serious Melonium Matters. In celebration of Black History Month, I, Council President, Shoyla Mills-Branson, will present resolution honoring the following historically black fraternities and sororities for their many contributions to the Plainfield community. Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity, the Zeta New Lambic chapter, Alpha Kappa Alpha sorority incorporated, Theta Phi Omega chapter, Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity incorporated, Plainfield and New Brunswick, Eleven I chapters, Omega Psi Phi Omicron Chi chapter, Delta Sigma Theta sorority, Central Jersey Eleven U chapter, Phi Beta Sigma fraternity incorporated, Chi Sigma chapter, Zeta Phi Beta sorority incorporated, A Omicron Zeta chapter, N I O D Phi Theta fraternity incorporated, Alpha Psi Omega chapter. I will read the resolution from the desk and then I will come down and I will ask the president or the representative of each one of the chapters mentioned to meet me in front where you will receive a resolution, a copy of the resolution, and we'll have a little photo op. Whereas to Black History Month is a call to each and every citizen to reflect on the cultural, scientific, political, and economic contributions of African-Americans which are woven throughout American society. We remember, learn from, and build on the past so that together we can build a better and more prosperous future. And whereas, Black History Month is also an occasion to rediscover the enduring stories of African-Americans and the gifts of freedom, purpose, and opportunity they have bestowed on further generations, it is also a time to commemorate countless contributions of African-Americans, many of whom lived through and surmounted the scourge of segregation, racial prejudice, and discrimination to enrich every fiber of American life. Their examples of heroism, patriotism, and enterprise have given people of all backgrounds confidence, courage, and faith to pursue their own dreams. And whereas the City Council, the City of Plainfield recognizes the extensive civil, social, and religious contributions made by black Americans, including many residents of the City of Plainfield, and whereas during Black History Month 2019, the City Council finds it befitting to bring attention and awareness to the many historically black fraternities and sororities who made significant contributions to the Plainfield community, and whereas these historically black fraternities and sororities have been a pivotal part of African-American history and culture in our Plainfield community since the early 20th century. Launching conferences of historically black colleges, these organizations have been a central resource for support and service with the overall mission of strengthening the black community. May therefore be it resolved that City, the City Council of the City of Plainfield, County of Union, does hereby recognize the following historically black fraternities and sororities for their many years of contributions to help uplift the Plainfield community. Alpha Phi Alpha, Alpha Kappa Alpha, Kappa Alpha Psi, Omega Psi Phi, Delta Sigma Theta, Phi Beta Sigma, Zeta Phi Beta, N I O D Phi Theta. Furthermore, resolve that a copy of this resolution be presented as a sincere token of this council's appreciation. This resolution should further be forwarded to the schools and libraries in this city to encourage their participation in the teaching of the historical contributions of black Americans. I would like the representatives to join me as well as the fraternal members of the City Council to join me now and try. [inaudible] Okay. As a result of Black History Month is a call to each and every citizen to reflect on the cultural, scientific, political, and economic contributions of African-Americans which are woven throughout American society. We remember, learn from, and build on the past so that together we can build a better and more prosperous future. And whereas, Black History Month is also an occasion to rediscover the enduring stories of African-Americans and the gifts of freedom, purpose, and opportunity they have bestowed on further generations, it is also a time to commemorate countless contributions of African-Americans, many of whom lived through and surmounted the scourge of segregation, racial prejudice, and discrimination to enrich every fiber of American life. Their examples of heroism, patriotism, and enterprise have given people of all backgrounds confidence, courage, and faith to pursue their own dreams. And whereas the City Council, the City of Plainfield recognizes the extensive civil, social, and religious contributions made by black Americans, including many residents of the City of Plainfield, and whereas during Black History Month 2019, the City Council finds it befitting to bring attention and awareness to the many historically black fraternities and sororities who made significant contributions to the Plainfield community, and whereas these historically black fraternities and sororities have been a pivotal part of African-American history and culture in our Plainfield community since the early 20th century. Launching conferences of historically black colleges, these organizations have been a central resource for support and service with the overall mission of strengthening the black community. May therefore be it resolved that City, the City Council of the City of Plainfield, County of Union, does hereby recognize the following historically black fraternities and sororities for their many years of contributions to help uplift the Plainfield community. Alpha Phi Alpha, Alpha Kappa Alpha, Kappa Alpha Psi, Omega Psi Phi, Delta Sigma Theta, Phi Beta Sigma, Zeta Phi Beta, N I O D Phi Theta. Furthermore, resolve that a copy of this resolution be presented as a sincere token of this council's appreciation. This resolution should further be forwarded to the schools and libraries in this city to encourage their participation in the teaching of the historical contributions of black Americans. I would like the representatives to join me as well as the fraternal members of the City Council to join me now and try. [inaudible] Okay. So returning to their seats or leaving, we want to thank them so much because these are the groups that provide scholarships for our students, that do mentorship, that have science, technology, engineering, and math programs, so we're very appreciative for the time that they spend with the Plainfield community. [applause] Unfinished business, we will now at this time have a presentation from Mr. Ryan West, Director of Finance, who will provide us a brief update on technology training.
Good evening, Council and citizens of Plainfield. We've got multiple initiatives going forward with regard to technology training. The first one I will cover is the SISCO program, you know, which is moving people toward certifications in network architecture. We're currently running six classes per week, four in the evening and two during the day. We've got 34 students currently enrolled. To complete the program will take up to 280 hours of class time in order to complete the curriculum. And I'm anticipating that most students will not sit for the CCNA certification before the summer. You know, we're running them out of two different locations. You come in a church where we've got 23, you know, individuals enrolled, or originally started with 23, there are currently 21, you know, enrolled at this point in time. And in Union County College, we have 15 people originally enrolled, and there are currently 13, you know, still in the program. We've run a number of what are known as digital literacy training classes. In fact, there have been seven programs to date, four held during the day and three at night. The curriculum was designed to run a minimum of eight weeks based on the interests and capabilities of the students. You know, 26 individuals have received certificates of completion with two pending. And we know of at least one individual that reported finding a job after completion of the program. We also have an initiative going out to Plainfield Public Library, you know, where classes are focused on what are known as Internet Core Computer Competencies, or IC3, and Microsoft Office Applications. There have been 52 certificates obtained to date, ranging from, you know, within IC3, there are four modules, you know, and we've had four Microsoft Office Certifications and 48 around the IC3 programs. And they will continue, you know, and on top of that, we're also refurbishing one of the facilities so we can qualify as a testing site. Many of you have probably read the announcement of the $98,000 grant, you know, to the Board of Education, and that's tied into, you know, a request to bring, you know, CCNA or SISCO certified training back to the high school. So in September, the plan is to initiate that again. And longer term, the Board of Ed has indicated it has every intention of bringing, you know, significant STEM training back throughout the whole career. Now, unless there are questions, end of my report. I will be sending you a hard copy of this tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. West. Council members, any questions? Thank you. Now, we will hear from Director Shep Brown from Health and Social Services. He will provide a brief update on abandoned properties in Plainfield.
Good evening, Council President, Council, and members of the Plainfield community. I want to thank you for this opportunity to briefly talk about the abandoned property initiative. It is an initiative that we started about two years ago in which we work with and look at abandoned properties. Our goal is either to get them back on the tax wall and to make sure they are not derelict in the community. Currently, we have 302 properties on our abandoned properties list. Of those 302 properties, 15% of those are in the process of being returned to occupancy. We have approximately 21% of the owners on the current abandoned properties list have appealed the abandoned status because they intend on rehabilitating the property. In each case, they were asked to provide a 12-month timeline. In that 12-month timeline, they have to tell us what they're going to do on those properties, and they have to meet those goals because we follow up with an inspection from our office. We initially had close to 20 rehabilitation plans on file. We have, eight of those have been converted to completion, which is successful for a small office like ours. The 12 remaining plans will be monitored regularly throughout its completion, and that completes my report. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Director Brown, any questions?
I have a question. You said there are about 300 properties on the list. Is that like the average number for a town this size, or like are we below average, above average?
That's a good question. There, there is no average. Most municipalities don't even monitor what they do. Most of them do not have an office dedicated to making and abandoning properties or working for folks who aren't foreclosed.
Connect to you, L A P Q O P A P L three one F one nine.
And so, so we're one of the few municipalities that actually have an active program. Some of the larger cities like New Brunswick and Newark and Camden have a larger program because they have a lot more houses that are in abandoned process. So briefly, I do want to add though, in order to become banned, and they generally have to be foreclosure. So one of the things we should probably be looking at is the foreclosure and how that is impacting Jersey. Clearly, the data shows that almost one in nine houses are in some form of foreclosure. So in our office of community development, one of the things that we do is we work with, we send the information packets to those in foreclosure so that they know there's resources that they can reach out to to help them stay in the house. Because ultimately, what I gave you was a clinical approach. These are the numbers, but we also have to look at, these are people's homes, and these are people's, this is degenerational wealth. This is what they would like to share with other people.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Mr. Brown, what's the appellate process?
The appeal process?
Yes.
So what they would have to do is they have to write for an appeal. They have to come talk to us and say, this is what we're going to do with the property, or this is why the property is in the state that it's in. And so, we look at the data. They have to show us if it's about, they may have to show us PSNG, they may have to show us that the utilities are on, they may have to show us that there's some rent in that, so they would show us a lease. They have to show us why that house is in that state, and we actively go out and look at that house to inspect that it actually is indeed something's going on in that house.
And at the end of that 12 months, what happens? Can it get an extension or?
Will not get to that point where someone's asked for an extension. I would certainly explore it, but I won't say yes because oftentimes, these houses have been sitting on the market in our communities for a very long time. And so, we don't want them to continue to sit there for more years. We want them to do the work and move those properties, rent it, sell it, live in it, but you have to do something with it.
So the 21%, is that a surprise to you?
No.
Okay, so is that kind of low, do you think?
Um, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Director Brown.
You're welcome.
Now, we will hear from Director Jazz Clayton-Hunt. She's the Director of Communications and Technology, and she will give us a brief demonstration of the proposed Plainfield marketing strategies.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to point out, what I'm going to show tonight is a major part of the marketing strategy, where the marketing dollars go, but it's not the complete strategy. I just want to give an overview of what we have in mind in terms of branding Plainfield. As Plainfield grows, we want to appeal to different demographics. We want to make sure that investors stay aware of the opportunities that are here, and we also want to reach out to the new potential residents that we want to bring in and the type of, as we build, form the strategy for the town, the vision of the city that we want to be, this marketing strategy will develop to complement that. So I'm just going to show the ads now, and I'm going to show one value ad that was given to us by Comcast as a, we didn't pay for it, it's just something that they do for us being good partners. So that will come at the end of the three ads.
Would it be possible?
Oh, you know, I thought it did. I forgot.
[laughter]
[inaudible]
Okay, look at it. [inaudible] Now, do you have any other seats? Anybody else have any other seats?
Okay, will the other queues come up? Okay, thank you all. What I'm going to do is take presidential privilege, and there are more members of Omega Psi Phi, come and join Mr. Smith, he said he gets the letters.
Yes.
Okay. Don't go too far, Bill. Any other Alphas or Castis here than the ones that stood up?
Delta?
I can't see.
I can't see.
Thank you.
Delta?
[inaudible]
Thank you, Stone.
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 Okay, so returning to their seats or leaving, we want to thank them so much because these
are the groups that provide scholarships for our students, that do mentorship, that have science, technology, engineering, and math programs, so we're very appreciative for the time that they spend with the Plainfield community. Unfinished business, we will now at this time have a presentation from Mr. Ryan West, Director of Finance, who will provide us a brief update on technology training.
Good evening, Council and citizens of Plainfield. We've got multiple initiatives going forward with regard to technology training. The first one I will cover is the SISCO program, you know, which is moving people toward certifications in network architecture. We're currently running six classes per week, four in the evening and two during the day. We've got 34 students currently enrolled. To complete the program will take up to 280 hours of class time in order to complete the curriculum. And I'm anticipating that most students will not sit for the CCNA certification before the summer. You know, we're running them out of two different locations. You come in a church where we've got 23, you know, individuals enrolled, or originally started with 23, there are currently 21, you know, enrolled at this point in time. And in Union County College, we have 15 people originally enrolled, and there are currently 13, you know, still in the program. We've run a number of what are known as digital literacy training classes. In fact, there have been seven programs to date, four held during the day and three at night. The curriculum was designed to run a minimum of eight weeks based on the interests and capabilities of the students. You know, 26 individuals have received certificates of completion with two pending. And we know of at least one individual that reported finding a job after completion of the program. We also have an initiative going out to Plainfield Public Library, you know, where classes are focused on what are known as Internet Core Computer Competencies, or IC3, and Microsoft Office Applications. There have been 52 certificates obtained to date, ranging from, you know, within IC3, there are four modules, you know, and we've had four Microsoft Office Certifications and 48 around the IC3 programs. And they will continue, you know, and on top of that, we're also refurbishing one of the facilities so we can qualify as a testing site. Many of you have probably read the announcement of the $98,000 grant, you know, to the Board of Education, and that's tied into, you know, a request to bring, you know, CCNA or SISCO certified training back to the high school. So in September, the plan is to initiate that again. And longer term, the Board of Ed has indicated it has every intention of bringing, you know, significant STEM training back throughout the whole career. Now, unless there are questions, end of my report. I will be sending you a hard copy of this tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. West. Council members, any questions? Thank you. Now, we will hear from Director Shep Brown from Health and Social Services. He will provide a brief update on abandoned properties in Plainfield.
Good evening, Council President, Council, and members of the Plainfield community. I want to thank you for this opportunity to briefly talk about the abandoned property initiative. It is an initiative that we started about two years ago in which we work with and look at abandoned properties. Our goal is either to get them back on the tax wall and to make sure they are not derelict in the community. Currently, we have 302 properties on our abandoned properties list. Of those 302 properties, 15% of those are in the process of being returned to occupancy. We have a, approximately 21% of the owners on the current abandoned properties list have appealed the abandoned status because they intend on rehabilitating the property. In each case, they were asked to provide a 12-month timeline. In that 12-month timeline, they have to tell us what they're going to do on those properties, and they have to meet those goals because we follow up with an inspection from our office. We initially had close to 20 rehabilitation plans on file. We have, eight of those have been converted to completion, which is successful for a small office like ours. The 12 remaining plans will be monitored regularly throughout its completion, and that completes my report. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Director Brown, any questions?
I have a question. You said there are about 300 properties on the list. Is that like the average number for a town this size, or like are we below average, above average?
That's a good question. There, there is no average. Most municipalities don't even monitor what they do. Most of them do not have an office dedicated to making and abandoning properties or working for folks who aren't foreclosed.
Connect to you, L A P Q O P A P L three one F one nine.
And so, so we're one of the few municipalities that actually have an active program. Some of the larger cities like New Brunswick and Newark and Camden have a larger program because they have a lot more houses that are in abandoned process. So briefly, I do want to add though, in order to become banned, and they generally have to be foreclosure. So one of the things we should probably be looking at is the foreclosure and how that is impacting Jersey. Clearly, the data shows that almost one in nine houses are in some form of foreclosure. So in our office of community development, one of the things that we do is we work with, we send the information packets to those in foreclosure so that they know there's resources that they can reach out to to help them stay in the house. Because ultimately, what I gave you was a clinical approach. These are the numbers, but we also have to look at, these are people's homes, and these are people's, this is degenerational wealth. This is what they would like to share with other people.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Mr. Brown, what's the appellate process?
The appeal process?
Yes.
So what they would have to do is they have to write for an appeal. They have to come talk to us and say, this is what we're going to do with the property, or this is why the property is in the state that it's in. And so, we look at the data. They have to show us if it's about, they may have to show us PSNG, they may have to show us that the utilities are on, they may have to show us that there's some rent in that, so they would show us a lease. They have to show us why that house is in that state, and we actively go out and look at that house to inspect that it actually is indeed something's going on in that house.
And at the end of that 12 months, what happens? Can it get an extension or?
Will not get to that point where someone's asked for an extension. I would certainly explore it, but I won't say yes because oftentimes, these houses have been sitting on the market in our communities for a very long time. And so, we don't want them to continue to sit there for more years. We want them to do the work and move those properties, rent it, sell it, live in it, but you have to do something with it.
So the 21%, is that a surprise to you?
No.
Okay, so is that kind of low, do you think?
Um, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you. Director Brown.
You're welcome.
Now, we will hear from Director Jazz Clayton-Hunt. She's the Director of Communications and Technology, and she will give us a brief demonstration of the proposed Plainfield marketing strategies.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to point out, what I'm going to show tonight is a major part of the marketing strategy, where the marketing dollars go, but it's not the complete strategy. I just want to give an overview of what we have in mind in terms of branding Plainfield. As Plainfield grows, we want to appeal to different demographics. We want to make sure that investors stay aware of the opportunities that are here, and we also want to reach out to the new potential residents that we want to bring in and the type of, as we build, form the strategy for the town, the vision of the city that we want to be, this marketing strategy will develop to complement that. So I'm just going to show the ads now, and I'm going to show one value ad that was given to us by Comcast as a, we didn't pay for it, it's just something that they do for us being good partners. So that will come at the end of the three ads.
Would it be possible?
Oh, you know, I thought it did. I almost got one.
[inaudible]
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 Connect with you. L A P Q A P L three one F one nine.
Council President, I'd like to apologize. We're having some technical difficulties, and I'd be happy to re-present at another council meeting, at the next council meeting.
Yes. Okay. I'm sure you all enjoyed the pictures, though. Those are some beautiful pictures, so we'll get the words with it the next time. Okay. We have consideration of public hearing, second reading, and final passage. Mr. Clerk, please read M.C. 2019-01 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
M.C. 2019-01 is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield and the County of Union authorizing the Second Amendment to the Financial Agreement with South Second Street Development Urban Rule 2 LLC. We respect certain properties identified as Block 112, Block 903 on the city's official tax path, or commonly known as 738, 738 South Second Street. It's hereby certified that the notice of public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on January 26, 2019.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. Seeing no one coming, may I have a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
So moved.
Seconded.
It has been moved to second. May I have a roll call?
You have a motion to adopt.
Oh, sorry.
You have a motion to adopt.
I'm sorry. I closed right now. I need a motion to accept. I am sorry. Okay. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved. Seconded.
Approved. Okay. It's been moved to second. Now, Mr. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Armani.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Yes.
Councilman McCray.
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday.
Yes.
And Council President Mills Ransum.
Yes.
Yes, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Mr. Clerk, please read M.C. 2019-2 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
M.C. 2019-02 is an ordinance amending the schedule of salaries and wages adopted pursuant to Article 14, Chapter 11 of the Mississauga Code of the City of Plainfield, New Jersey, 1971. This is a salary amendment for the Plainfield Fire Officers Association. It's hereby certified that the notice of public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on January 26, 2019.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. May I have a motion to close the public hearing of this ordinance?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage? And if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
Moved. Seconded.
May I have a roll call?
Roll call on M.C. 2019-02. Councilmembers Armani.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday.
Yes.
Council President Mills Ransum.
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted on second reading, final passage.
Mr. Clerk, please read M.C. 2019-3 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
M.C. 2019-3 is an ordinance amending the schedule of salaries and wages adopted pursuant to Article 14, Chapter 11 of the Mississauga Code of the City of Plainfield, New Jersey, 1971. And this is the Health Officer Salary Ban. It's hereby certified that the notice of public hearing was published in the Courier-News on January 26, 2019.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak to this ordinance. May I have a motion to close the public hearing of this ordinance?
Moved. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage? And if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
So moved.
Seconded.
May I have a roll call?
Roll call on M.C. 2019-03. Councilmembers Armani.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday.
Yes.
Council President Mills Ransum.
Yes.
That is unanimous. This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Mr. Clerk, please read M.C. 2019-4 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
M.C. 2019-04 is an ordinance deleting Chapter 2 of the Mississauga Code of the City of Plainfield, Sections 244, 283, 296, 297, 2971, 2972, 2973, 2974, 2975, 2976, 2988, 2103, 2104, and 21320, amended Sections 2, 9, 3, amending salary ranges for business administrator and department directors. It's hereby certified that the notice of public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on January 26, 2019.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance.
Hi, I'm Cynthia Smith. I'm the President of the PMEA. I just have a question on the ordinance. Is this amendment salary increases for our top paid officials? I just have a question. Because it says amendment. Is that for increases to our top paid officials?
Absolutely not. No, actually, it lowers the salary range.
It lowers the salary range?
Yes, it lowers the minimum salary range from $110,000 to $95,000 for both the business administrator and department director.
But it's an increase?
I can answer your question, then you can...
Okay.
You have to address the chair. Yes, previously, the business administrator minimum was $115,000. Council President is now lowering to $95,000 for business administrator and department director. Thank you.
Okay. So that says salary management. So am I to understand?
Cynthia, you're going to have to get all your questions out at one time.
Well, he said he wanted to finish the question. So am I to understand tonight that these amendments are to lower their salaries, just lowering the ranges? Are they going to get increases in this salary minimum? That's the only question that I had tonight. Thank you.
There'll be no change in salary for any, for the business administrator or department director. It only sets the range for future individuals who will hold those positions. Thank you, Council President.
May I have a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
So be. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and title passage? And if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
So be. Seconded.
Roll call, please.
Roll call on M.C. 2019-04. Councilmembers Armani.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday.
Yes.
Council President Mills Ransum.
Yes.
That is unanimous. This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
A total of 30 minutes has been allocated for public comments limited to resolutions and ordinances being considered this evening. If you wish to be heard, please give your name and address to the clerk for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes. The floor is now open.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, City Council and residents of Plainfield. My name is Des...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
You're doing your name and address. Okay.
Destiny Eastland. I live at 615 Luen Avenue, Plainfield. I am a 911 dispatcher and a longtime resident of Plainfield for over 10 years. And for the past four years, I've taken phone calls from mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers, cousins, aunts, and maybe even yourself. We at the Plainfield Police Central Communications carry out our job to the best of our abilities. We pride ourselves in making sure police officers and firefighters go home safe to their families. Tonight, I come before you to express my frustration and disappointment. My coworkers and I have done no wrong, and yet we are here pleading at seated hall for our jobs. Because of years of poor management and supervision, we are the ones on the chopping block, and it's just not fair. No alternative solutions, no discussions. We, as residents and employees of Plainfield, are disposable. It hurts me that the city would even consider privatizing Plainfield Police Central Communications and taking jobs out of our community. Emphasis on "our" community. I would like to present a scenario to the council. Imagine, for the past 12 months, you hear rumors that a company will be taking over your job. I would imagine this would make your mind scramble. You start to think about your rent, car note, groceries, childcare, and health insurance. You know basic necessities for you to survive, but no one has said anything to you. A few months later, you see that your employer is taking bids for the privatization of your job in the newspaper. Still, no one has said anything. These same companies are brought to your job, and you're asked to explain details about your everyday responsibility with these companies. A real slap in the face. And then you get the phone call less than three weeks ago from your union that losing your job may become a reality. The City Council, I want to close with this. We, as employees and residents of Plainfield, have voted you into office and put our trust in you. I hope that workforce development in your city would be the most important to you, even though some people in this room think we are disposable. If money is your concern, I believe not all has been done to allocate funds appropriately. And if I go into detail, we will be here all night. But I believe this is something the council should investigate. I want to leave on this note. I have the most multi-talented, diverse, and educated people as my coworkers.
I'd say yes.
We get the job done with few resources.
That's right.
Letting us go is sending the wrong message to your citizens and destroys the integrity of this great city and providing the best for your community. Thank you.
My name is Tia Mavro. I'm 605 East Front Street, Apartment 9, Plainfield, New Jersey. Actually, I'm a citizen, and I spoke last week. Cynthia Smith talked a little bit last week about my walk going Sandy. Got up at midnight. The only thing I knew was that it was dark. I was scared, and I had to get to work. So, I got up, put my coat on, put my boots on, my backpack, and I started walking from East Front Street to the police department. I couldn't understand why people were clapping or anything, because for me, it's just I had to get to work. The city needed us. And we was going to be here for them. And we were. We never stopped working for the city. And I want y'all to work for us now. Thank you.
Nancy Pupacar, 1129 Merle Avenue. I rise to speak in opposition to 093-19. I am a longtime union member, not necessarily of the city union. My father was a union member. I want to know how many workers are being... Union workers are being laid off? What are the demographics? How many males? How many females? How many blacks? How many Hispanics? And do you know the demographics of the people who are replacing them? And will they be unionized? And are they going... Or are these jobs going to go to city residents? I have a real concern because so many times, the operators have been very professional to me the number of times I've called for a number of emergencies throughout my lifetime in the city. I find this a slap in the face to these workers that have really helped us through all kinds of emergencies. When I called when my mother broke her hip, they were the ones that answered the call first. When my father died, I'm sure that that's the first... These are the first people that answered the call when my mother called when I wasn't home. I really find this despicable that you're going to do this to these workers. They know our city. As you heard, two of them at least live in the city. So when we say a house on Merle Avenue, they know where Merle Avenue is. When we say Greenbrook Park, they know where that is. When I call the central dispatch for Union County, I have to explain five times where Greenbrook Park is, because it takes extra time because they're unaware of where we are. So, I... As a citizen, longtime citizen, please vote this down. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Newsom. Unfortunately, I'm no longer a resident of Plainfield. I was born and raised in Plainfield, went to the school system. The reason why I relocated is because my son at the time had medical needs that Plainfield couldn't accommodate. So that's why I had to relocate to watch him. But I have been in a... I have been a dispatcher for over 18 years. So with your permission, if I can just have this opportunity to say what I need to say. Thank you. A 911 telecommunicator operator is not an easy job. It comes with great liability. In fact, most jobs, you can bring your problems to work, but not a 911 operator. Your mind has to be clear and free of stress or drama because you don't know what's coming on the other end of that line. My trainer, Ann Riddles, may her soul rest in peace. She told me, Kelly, all you have to do is come to work and do your job. You never have to worry about losing your job because you're a civil service employee. Being civil service came with perks, such as job security, competitive benefits, and great pay. For over 15 years, I performed along with my coworkers the necessary duties as a 911 operator, effectively with dignity and integrity. I knew I didn't just represent myself, but the city of Plainfield as a whole. So I had to be accountable for every action. As you look on the news, you see 911 operators dropping the ball with some sort of negligence. But not Plainfield. That never was the case. We made certain we meticulously did our jobs without any negligence or bringing any defamation of character to the Queen City. So today, we are here at no far of our own to have our jobs taken from us. We didn't create this immense deficit in this budget. So why do you want us to suffer taking pay cuts, losing our job, and our benefits? Let the people who's responsible for this take the loss in their civil service status. We built our lives on our current careers, and it's despicable the way they have even neglected to even convey to us we were losing our jobs. I just want to let you guys know. It may be us today, but don't get too comfortable in these cushion chairs because what could be done tomorrow? We covered these citizens. We covered the police. We covered the fire department. We covered the EMS providers. We covered the city as a whole. And it's unfortunate. No one is here to cover us.
Hello, my name is Sheldon Green. I live at 1300 Grand Avenue. And I just want to share a little history. I'm a retired lieutenant in the Plainfield Fire Department. I served as the city's emergency manager coordinator for twelve years. Our dispatchers are a lifelong. As me as a firefighter under adverse conditions, the only communication I have is with that dispatcher. The information that she shares me is critical to my life. And the funny part about it is just recently, we were just honoring our historically black colleges for where we have come through our black history movement. Yet still, on the same token, we want to take jobs from these women who are mothers, who pay taxes, who pay bills, who go into these economy. We have to think about that. As a society, do we take from one to benefit from the other? And if we do, then we're no better than Trump's America. But if he just do, he shut down America, put 800,000 people out of work to hold us hostage, to build a wall. But what is important, every one of those 800,000 people was an individual who had bills and responsibility to pay. I, as a taxpayer, if I have to pay more, then so be it. As long as that I know that the person I look around is able to feed their family and be gainfully employed. Now, we can take into Trump's America. We bailed out the steel industry. They made millions of dollars, but it didn't portray down to the work, the people who look at us. We work every day. But yet still, the only way that this company is able to go on, able to make a profit is by lowering the salary. Those salaries you low, how are they going to fill that payback? Right now, New Jersey is trying to raise the minimum wage to $15 an hour because they realize people cannot live on anything less. So by you cutting their jobs and telling them to go to a company who's going to pay them less, but yet still, when you make that call to 911 and you want someone to be there, who do you want to come? Someone who... Someone who is gainfully employed, who's able to make a decent living, or someone who's just gonna come off the street and really care about you? Those are the things that we gotta think about, and I hope you really realize that. Cutting a person's job number where they are is not a societal benefit. It takes away from us as a society. When you tell somebody who put their life on the line, and I was there when that woman walked in to work down in that E O C during Sandy, because I was there, twenty-four seven, I was there. And I seen the people who showed up and the people who stayed home. So I just want to say today, as a retired fighter, thank you for what you have done for me as a person. And I hope that council considers this seriously.
Six sixteen West Fourth Street. I'm actually calling, I'm actually coming to you as a union member, because I'm in the union twenty-eight years of my job right now. And I'm passionate about people that are in the union, and it's just so important with these jobs. Now, I've seen in my union where they tried to privatize in different districts, and we knocked it right down. We protested, and we did what we had to do. I'm passionate about women, or even men, whoever it is that's gonna lose their jobs. These people gotta live. If you come and outsource and look to another company, they're gonna come here, are they gonna be making more or less? Let's not reinvent the wheel if we don't have to. Keep it the way it is. We need to keep this the way it is. These people need to live. If they're familiar with this town and with this district, why are we even bothering with this? And you know, I wanted to also say, me as a resident, I have called on dispatch several times, and they were there. And sometimes we even made a mistake, and they called right back. I said, okay, we all right, we okay, it's okay. They said, no, but we're doing our job. That's how you know somebody is passionate about their job, and they call right back. And even there was one time, they even sent the police. We said, no, we all right, as a matter of fact, come on in and get something to eat if you want to. Because that's the type of family I have. But I just want to say, I'm here standing in the gap with them, because I'm a union member also as well. And I don't want to see anybody lose their job. I don't want to see anybody without a job. I don't want to see these women without a place to live. With, who's going to accommodate them as far as like their salary? If they get, if you, what is the city gonna do for them, is my question? What is the city gonna do? They gonna give them another job at a lower pay? You can't tell them to go to Walmart, because now it's self-checkout. You go to, you go to Stop and Shop, someplace, or self-checkout. People, they're being, they're replacing people. Now, when you, now when you talk about the salary going, the minimum wage going up to fifteen dollars an hour, now when you replace them, they gonna be making fifteen dollars an hour, it doesn't all add up. All I'm saying is, I'm asking you, Madam President and the council people, please reconsider these people not losing their job. Please, the union, fight for them. I'm a union member, y'all, please, 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 fight for them. If we have to protest and stand outside, please, fight for them, because I don't want to see anybody without a job. Especially when they doing a job, and a person that's passionate, come out in Hurricane Sandy? Whoever, if you all were here, y'all lived to see that, that thing was bad, it was terrible. It was terrible, I seen a whole street wreck. I seen what happened in my camp, I was without electricity for fourteen days. But I just want you all to, please, just consider it, please, and just think about those ladies, okay? Don't lay down tonight and not think about it, okay?
Jeff Dunn, three twenty Park Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. I've been here a long time. I want to say to you, first of all, this is the new council, I haven't seen you guys in ever. But I want to say, I am a longtime resident of Plainfield. I've been here for over forty years. And I want to say that I am proud to be a part of this city, and how this city was served by these dispatchers. When I heard that they were being displaced by the possibility of a for-profit business, I have issues with that. I have issues with this, there's somebody who's basically focused is to make money. The people who are serving now are serving because they know their job, they're well-trained, and they're residents of this city. Some, I have a story. My brother, who passed maybe fifteen years ago. Before he passed, he had issues with his kidneys, and sometimes he had to be rescued, and we had to call nine-one-one. And sometimes, the people who was on the other side knew us, and it made a difference, and it saved my brother's life. So I have a personal interest in this situation. I don't want a stranger, an outsider, a for-profit business running and connecting my fire, my police, my ambulance, and all other services. This is our house. This is our house. And we need our family here, our people here. I want to say to you, this place will be packed with other people, but you know what? I'm gonna say what they can't say. They're afraid to come up here. They're afraid to say what's on their mind. They're afraid to protect their, 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 their union members, because they are scared for their jobs, because of politics. This is beyond politics, this is like dead going home. And we don't need anybody, anybody who's a stranger to our town. Plainfield is unique, it is not a city, it is not a suburb. It's an urban suburban, unique hybrid of a very diverse group of people who care. And please forgive my passion, but I believe what I believe, and I love what I love, and I love Plainfield, and I hope you do too.
Good evening again, everyone. Excuse me tonight, I'll, Vice President was supposed to speak as well. He received a phone call before the meeting started, letting him know that his mother-in-law had passed away. So now I have to try to condense some of the things he was gonna speak on into my three minutes as well. Tonight, after we speak here, there will be rebuttals. And you will hear that transfers can't be done. We have given up trying to argue the point that the dispatchers need to be saved, because if you have already made up your minds, we're wasting our time on standing here asking you to save the dispatchers. So last week, we came to the meeting, and I did ask if we could transfer two of the employees to save their jobs into comparable salary positions. City of Plainfield posted on the wall, job that was comparable salary position. Within minutes after the posting, they were told to go get it and pull it back. It is the position that we had asked in reference to, a recreational leader at the senior center. So now what's being said is that they don't need a recreational leader at the senior center. Why not? Senior citizens do recreational programs as well. The other thing is that the other position that we spoke about, and Director Riley's still out now. I've been told that he's not here, so we would have to wait till he's here to find out if one of them could be moved to the police aid section. Police aides are understaffed as well. They only have seven police aides. That unit should have a total of twelve police aides. You're supposed to have two per shift, and there are, they work four days on and four days off. There's three shifts a day. So you need six people for the first four-day shift, and six people for the second four-day shift. As it stands now, they're understaffed, and this is why overtime is so high in the police department. When these ladies go to work, they have to work through their lunch hour. They get automatically paid for overtime, because they don't have enough people to run it. When these ladies go to the bathroom in the police aid section, they have to take the phones to the bathroom with them. That's understaffed. No lunch hours, because if you had enough staff there, one could relieve the other, but that doesn't happen. So, police officers are doing overtime there too. What happens? The girls are the only ones working, but, and the police are out there, but that's the girls' jobs. So, there's room in that police aid section. Or is it that the city is looking to outsource them too, and we'll be standing here again, because they don't want to fully staff neither one of those units? You'll hear that the employees have to be qualified for the positions. We checked the qualifications, and they are qualified for those positions. Let me see, you all, so here the excuses that it can't be done. But right now, we're still hiring. In the past, when we had layoffs, they were hiring freezes. Provisional employees were let go first, temporary employees were let go. The city did all kinds of stuff before they went to unionize permanent positions and laid them off. Today, that's not happening, it's continuing. And I think they're ringing a buzzard, so I could have to sit down, but I'm going to skip over to one quick last statement that I would like to make that I think is important. Senator Sweeney, I'm sorry, Stephen Sweeney, he passed the Workplace Democracy Enhancement Act, which was to enhance the public sector unions. And we all sitting here tonight are from the Democratic Party, that means that you're supposed to stand with unions, because Trump is trying to tear down unions. So if you're from the Democratic Party, you should be standing with the unions. So tonight, we're asking you to stand with the union and vote no on this. I would just like to ask everybody that's here tonight in support of the unions to please stand. If you're here tonight to support these ladies, to please stand, because we're asking the council tonight to vote no, until you can check out the budget. Table it, table it, and see where you can do cuts that doesn't take permanent jobs away. Thank you.
I have a report from Dixie Lee. At the last meeting, Corporation Council said that there would be a savings of about two million dollars, if I remember correctly. Is that in one year or over, or over the period of five years?
It's over a five-year period.
Hey, Council President, the consent agenda has been identified as Resolutions eighty-seven dash nineteen through R eighty-nine dash nineteen, R ninety-four dash nineteen through R ninety-seven dash nineteen.
I didn't close it until I go. I didn't close the public session. Okay. Say no one else, kind of a, here for motion to close public session. All those in favor?
Consent agenda items have been identified as R eighty-seven dash nineteen through R eighty-nine dash nineteen, R ninety-four dash nineteen through R ninety-seven dash nineteen, and R ninety-nine dash nineteen through R one zero two dash nineteen.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? I have a roll call.
Councilmembers Armani?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Will Ransley?
Yes.
Consent agenda items have been approved.
Mr. Clerk, will you please read the remaining resolutions?
Resolution R ninety dash nineteen, amending the sleepy hollow designated neighborhood to include portions of Fernwood Lane and Watchung Avenue.
May I have a motion to approve? Second? May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Any staying?
So that was five in favor, one opposed, this resolution was adopted. We come to Resolution R one ninety-one dash nineteen, granting advice and consent to the appointment of C G malls.
May I have a motion to approve? Any second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution R ninety-two dash nineteen, authorizing the execution of professional services agreement between the City of Plainfield and Claims Resolution Corporation.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying?
Resolution R ninety-three dash nineteen, authorizing the submission of the layoff plan to the New Jersey Civil Service Commission.
May I have a motion to approve?
So be it.
Any second? I do, uh, no second? Okay.
Uh, in the event of a second, the resolution fails. No second.
No second. There's no second. Okay.
Resolution R ninety-eight, authorizing request from the Urban Enterprise Zone funding.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't think I heard anyone, but, okay, let's try to get. Opposed? Let's stay.
I have a question, can we table it?
I didn't see your hand, oh, okay. Councilwoman Davis?
Can we table it, so after we see the presentation, so then we could just get more clarification on what the marketing is?
The presentation of what?
This is for the, this is to move the money from the U E Z for the marketing strategies?
Are we understanding what?
Not gate dash nineteen.
You want to extend?
Yeah.
It really will.
Yeah.
Just let it say. All right, we now come to we now come to ordinances on first reading. Mr. Clerk, will you please read ordinance twenty nineteen oh five by title?
Uh, ordinance number twenty nineteen dash zero five is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap rate pursuant to N J S A forty-eight comma four dash twenty-five fourteen.
Are there any questions from the council? I will now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So be it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Roll call one, M C twenty-nine, twenty nineteen dash zero five. Councilmembers Armani?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
President Will Ransley?
Yes.
There's unanimous support, this was adopted on first reading.
Okay. General comments, the total of sixty minutes has been allotted for all public comments to be presented. If you wish to be heard, please give your name and address to the clerk for the record. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed will be limited to five minutes. The floor is now open.
Nancy Pupar, eleven twenty-nine Merle Avenue. City council members and new members and administration, I hope you all got to print edition of the Courier-News today. On the front page, which is really kind of unusual for the Courier-News, they put on about a notice for a public hearing at the zoning board of adjustment at North Plainfield, because DeVita wants to propose a new dialysis center on Route twenty-two. As someone who has personal opinions on what happened at Muhlenberg, I'll leave those opinions behind. However, DeVita does occupy a space at Muhlenberg, and my concern after reading this article is, has anybody contacted DeVita from the city, Economic Development, City Administrator Mayor, to find out if they're moving out of town if they get this in place? Because it seems to me that that's the next step. I'm surprised that it would happen so quickly after the deed restrictions went in. It's unfortunate. It's unfortunate, you know, the developer's hands are tied over on that property because of the fiduciary restrictions. If DeVita does move out, I'm not saying they are, but why would the Courier-News put this on the front page to warn everybody? I would be concerned, I'm concerned about it because we've lost a lot of medical health care in this community. And my personal opinions behind my whole intention of fighting that whole debacle for ten years was to prefer some kind of health care for this community. And that's where my goals were, that was my motivation because somebody had to stand up for the citizens and the health care in this community. And I'm really concerned that I saw this on the front page. I hope to be able to go to the meeting and get more information. But it would be ashamed if we lost DeVita because there is a ten-year restriction on that property that a dialysis center cannot be put there independently and which is unfair to the developer over there and also unfair to the citizens of Plainfield. And I hope the city will look into this and make a phone call, and make more than one phone call because I would hate to see them leave because they already have a site in South Plainfield. Now they're gonna have a site in North Plainfield. Well, you know, they could bypass Plainfield at any time. So, it's my concern, and I really am concerned that the Courier didn't bury this article because normally they bury articles about things that affect Plainfield in the back pages. Thank you very much.
Any one else come to the mic? May I have a motion to close? General comments?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, may I have adjourned?